Again is Gil Reyes.
The countdown is on to January 2nd. That's when an estimated 1.4 million undocumented immigrants in California can begin applying for driver's licenses, thanks to the passage of Assembly Bill 60.
We have a responsibility to make sure now that we've had this incredible victory that we prepare people to be successful. We don't want the experiences that took place in Nevada where there was a 90% failure. What we want is a 100% success rate.
L.A. City Councilman Gil Sadio is helping folks get ready for the written driver's exams with this, a new brochure titled Listos Para Manejar, or Are You Ready to Drive? Inside are two practice tests, also information on eligibility. Applicants must have proof of California residency and insurance to drive. Councilman Sadio says these brochures are hot off the presses, the first 10,000 printed in Spanish, and they'll soon be available here at L.A. City Libraries, DMVs, and Resource Centers. They'll also be printed in Chinese and Korean.
The Los Angeles Public Library is very excited to be getting these brochures and will be adding them to our other resources that we have at all 73 locations. We have everything that people need to get a driver's license, including the DMV book, practice exams.
Councilman Sadio introduced the driver's license measure in the state legislature back in 1997 at the urging of his late wife, Ruby. With President Obama's planned executive action to benefit millions of undocumented workers, the mayor's office has also introduced two hotlines to help answer questions.
So people can start calling there to get good information on how they might be eligible for these different new immigration policy changes.
To help make the drive towards American privilege is an easier one for the undocumented. Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Questions regarding the president's new immigration policies can be answered by the group Naleo at 844-411-4263, also Asians Advancing Justice, at 888-349-9695. And staying on the topic of driving, some riveting road safety public service announcements from the LAPD are about to hit the airwaves. An official say they're sure to catch your attention. Yana K takes a look.
This dramatic public service announcement on hit-and-run incidents is part of LAPD's newest Obey the Rules of the Road campaign, promoting pedestrian and driver safety.
I think it's a new and improved way to relate to the community in a way that the LAPD is not accustomed to.
The edgy campaign includes two other PSAs, which Chief Charlie Beck unveiled at LAPD headquarters in downtown L.A. Hands Free Live focuses on distracted driving and features actor S.I. Morales.
What if you don't get a chance to say goodbye?
The third, called Don't Lose, promotes bicycle safety and features actor Reno Wilson from the TV show Mike and Molly.
One of the mandates of the Los Angeles Police Department is to reduce traffic, injuries, and fatalities. And there's so much the general public can do to help us in that quest.
Though different, the goal of the three PSAs is to help spread the message that it's everyone's responsibility to look out for each other. I'm Yana K for L.A. This Week.
And one of the PSAs touched on bicycle safety. That's because L.A. is enjoying a cycling renaissance right now, and the Car Free Festival, Sic La Via, has a lot to do with that. The latest rendition routed through South Los Angeles exclusively for the first time. Here's Gil Reyes.
Great, that was a good one. Yeah, that was alright. He said it all right.
The traditionally African-American communities of South Los Angeles welcomed newcomers on the open road with open arms.
Dust your bike off, oil up your wheels, and get out here and have some fun.
Sic La Via, once again closed off streets for cyclists, skaters, and pedestrians only, but this marked the first Sic La Via solely in South L.A. Cars barred along a six-mile stretch of Martin Luther King Boulevard for six straight hours on a recent Sunday.
This is a great chance to actually get to see what the neighborhood's about.
This marked Jack Gallagher's first-ever visit to this portion of Central Avenue, where musicians Duke Ellington, Billie Holiday, and Louis Armstrong helped establish L.A.'s once-thriving jazz scene from the Dunbar Hotel. On this 11th Sic La Via, as cyclists noticed new storefronts and owners greeted them, a different type of harmony filled the streets.
Of all the races coming together in unity and one cause, and that's to have fun.
There's a lot of excitement about welcoming neighbors who've not been here before, exposing individuals to new products, new services. And so, again, this is consistent with the revitalization that's occurring here on Central Avenue.
We have an amazing town, but too often, when we're stuck in cars, we don't get to see all the aspects of it. This is a chance for us to get healthy, to meet one another, and have a great day.
So far, four more Sic La Vias are planned for 2015. In South L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
And coming up, the San Fernando Valley is set to host its first-ever Sic La Via in March. Others in the New Year are planned for downtown L.A., Venice, and Pasadena. A new era in L.A. County government begins as four new officials are sworn into office. Gil Reyes reports from the ceremony.
From the county of Los Angeles.
The county of Los Angeles.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Newly-elected L.A. County Supervisor Hilda Solis takes the oath of office, with L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti administering. Solis, the former Labor Secretary to President Obama, now represents the eastern portion of Los Angeles County on the powerful L.A. County Board of Supervisors.
And I'd like to promote English language instruction onsite, at workplaces, on assembly floors, immediately adding the capability to workers and value to employers.
Joining her as a newcomer on the five-member board is Sheila Kuehl. Kuehl now represents the western part of L.A. County. The former California State Legislator, who is openly gay, had also starred in the '60s sitcom The Many Loves of Dobie Gillis. The civil rights movement of that era influenced her shift to politics.
I've been shaped by history, by these movements, by friends, by family, by colleagues, by work, and by my own restless spirit and thirst for justice.
Kuehl and Solis want to overhaul the county's child welfare system and reduce the number of people locked up in county jails. Solis says she's looking forward to increase collaboration between county and city government to get things done.
Because there isn't this artificial division between 88 cities in this county. We are one team, L.A. You've reminded me of that. You've helped mentor me in doing that.
Rounding out L.A. County's newest elected leaders are Sheriff Jim McDonnell and Assessor Jeffrey Prang. They're part of the biggest turnover of county leadership in recent memory. At the County Hall of Administration building, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Supervisors Solis and Kuehl replace leaders who retired from their posts due to term limits. International travelers at LAX don't have to go very far to experience some of the best dining Los Angeles has to offer. And to help spread the word, LAX invited some of the most influential food bloggers to sample the new offerings. Yana K also got a taste.
This crostini with roasted tomato, burrata, and a dollop of caviar is a staple dish from Petrosian, a popular high-end eatery in Los Angeles offering a variety of caviar and other delicacies. And now, international passengers can satisfy their craving for caviar at the Tom Bradley International Terminal at LAX.
It's necessary. I think there's a lot of travelers that understand good food and service, and the airport environment hasn't always afforded that. So we're trying to kind of reintroduce a little bit of luxury and elegance.
And if caviar isn't your thing, don't worry, there's something for everyone at the International Terminal. And to sample all the new offerings, airport officials invited elite yelpers and food bloggers for a night of tasting to help spread the word about the new food options.
This is the best thing I've ever eaten at an airport.
And if you're looking for something spicy yet fresh, Border Grill is the place for you. Check out this plate. This is a chicken quesadilla with a fresh cumin salad, a ceviche with garlic aioli, and a brisket taquito. I'm gonna try this, and this is actually to die for.
Mmm.
And passengers couldn't get enough of the tasty bites.
I ordered the Baja Ceviche, and it's delicious, very fresh, just the right seasoning, little bit of citrus. Wonderful.
Airport officials say they wanted passengers to experience all of the fine food Los Angeles has to offer without ever having to leave the airport.
LAX is really raising the bar as far as food and beverage and retail, architecture, everything here at LAX. So, LAX is happening.
And if you need a sweet treat, the Vanilla Bake Shop offers baby cupcakes that are baked fresh daily.
It's not your ordinary airport food. It's top quality.
Over at the Delta Terminal, Lemonade serves up original combinations of dishes and salads, like this chicken chili topped with truffle mac and cheese and paired with a watermelon radish and ahituna salad. Right next door is the filling station, giving passengers heartier options such as chicken wings, sandwiches, dates wrapped with bacon, flatbreads, and a selection of wines.
Simple, but really tasty. Good food, good booze. That's very important for me.
And for passengers, all of these upscale restaurants will certainly make time fly. I'm Yana K for L.A. This Week.
The mayor is asking you to volunteer three times a year. The city reduces fees at two Hollywood parking lots, and police searched for two men who beat and killed their housemate. These stories and more in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti recently launched the Mayor's Volunteer Corps initiative, which asks Angelenos to commit to volunteering three days out of the year.
Whether it's making sure that we reduce the number of dropouts we have in Los Angeles, whether it's strengthening the L.A. workforce or giving family more economic empowerment, there's a place for you in the Volunteer Corps.
We're gonna be cleaning the streets, and I'm very happy to be helping.
The Mayor's Volunteer Corps is divided into several specialty corps, including the Education Corps, which will focus on dropout reduction, Family Corps, which includes volunteering opportunities for the whole family, including young children, and Veterans Corps, which will direct volunteers to opportunities that will assist veterans. Parking fees at two Hollywood garages owned by the city will temporarily be reduced as part of a pilot program announced by Councilmember Mitchell Farrell and L.A. DOT. The fees at the two lots on 1625 North Vine Street and at 1710 Cherokee Avenue will be reduced for the first two hours to match on-street meter pricing, which is $2 an hour. The previous price was $2 per every 30 minutes at the Vine Street Garage and $2 per every 15 minutes at the Cherokee Avenue facility. The pilot program will last until March of 2015. O'Farrell says the pricing change will allow Hollywood to be competitive with other regional shopping destinations. Police are looking for two Hispanic men, Martin Santana and Hugo Parra, who they say beat and killed 44-year-old John Lubin at the group home near Exposition Park, where all three men lived. Police say it happened back on April 21st, and all because Lubin, who has a history of mental illness, was making too much noise.
The two individuals who are wanted for this case beat Mr. Lubin up over a period of several hours. And the abuse included pulling him off of a bunk bed at least once, possibly twice. Mr. Lubin's suffering a skull fracture.
Tipsters are asked to call LAPD Criminal Gang homicide detectives at 213-485-1383. The East Los Angeles YMCA and its community partners were recognized recently for making a positive impact on the city's youth. Yana K reports.
I had the life-changing experience of seeing Barack Obama in person. I was chosen for my youth in government group to be one of the two teenagers to go see President Obama. Never would I have thought that I would be hearing the President of the United States speak in person.
Seventeen-year-old Annabella Camacho recalls a moment she will always remember, a moment that was made possible by the East Los Angeles YMCA.
It is our job in this room and in this city to make sure that young people are our responsibility, that they know how to be job-ready, that they know how to be college-ready, and they know how to be family-ready, so that they can be the good parents involved when they have children, in their children's futures as well.
The work done by the East Los Angeles YMCA on behalf of young people was recognized at the East Los Angeles YMCA 10th Annual Heart of the Family Awards Luncheon. Community members and music producers like Jimmy Jam gathered to recognize all of the people who helped make a difference in the lives of young people. The Grammy Museum's Executive Director Robert Santelli received the Heart of the Community Award. He said becoming partners with the YMCA was the first step in becoming part of the community.
That was important because we knew it was an established entity in this city. It dealt with young people. It had goals and aspirations similar to ours, and it was embedded in the community like we aspire to be embedded.
Another honoree was Archbishop Jose Horacio Gomez, who received a Heart of the Family Award for his work in supporting local communities.
All of us in the church are dedicated to charity, justice, and good works. And all of us in the Catholic community want to be your partners in building a better Los Angeles and a better America.
And being a good partner to the city's youth is what the East Los Angeles YMCA hopes to continue doing. I'm Yana K for L.A. This Week.
And in this week's list of holiday things to do, It's a Wonderful Life on the Big Screen, Sant Asia, a Holiday Comedy, and L.A. Zoo Lights. Few things get you into the holiday spirit like the inspiring classic It's a Wonderful Life. But if you've only seen it on TV, you can catch it on the big screen, the way it was meant to be seen, on Saturday, December 20th at 7:30 p.m. at the Egyptian Theater at 6712 Hollywood Boulevard. The 1946 film directed by Frank Capra tells the tale of distraught George Bailey, played by James Stewart at his finest, who's about to commit suicide on Christmas Eve until an angel shows him how his death would affect those around him. Go to AmericasCinematheque.com. For a different kind of Christmas entertainment, there's Sant Asia, a holiday comedy written and performed by the alumni of comedy institutions Second City, Iowa Chicago, and Comedy Sports. Catch the multimedia holiday special on Saturday, December 20th at 8:00 p.m. or the next day at 2:00 p.m. at the Wood Fire at the White 321 Pickup 321. Catch the multimedia holiday special on Saturday, December 20th at 8:00 p.m. or the next day at 2:00 p.m. at White Fire Theater at 13500 Ventura Boulevard in Sherman Oaks. This annual holiday romp has been a cult hit and critics pick for 14 years. Sant Asia, a Holiday Comedy, has been compared to old-time vaudeville and to the likes of The Chisenhall and The Carol Burnett Show. For tickets, prices, parking, and other info, go to santasia.com. And another reminder to go to see L.A. Zoo Lights will bring you an inside look on the next episode of L.A. This Week. It's an all-new holiday light experience that combines spectacular sets and lighting design with the enchanting environment of the L.A. Zoo. You'll get to stroll through areas of the zoo that are transformed into a fantastical wonderland populated by glowing light animals. View real reindeer, visit the Santa on select days, and enjoy holiday treats and goodies all under the stars. The lights will be on through January 4th, except for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. The zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. More info can be found at LAZoolights.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. It's a bit of wilderness mixed in with ecology and the best of park amenities. City leaders joined community members in Sunland as they broke ground for the new Oro Vista Park. Anna Marcos was there.
It's a scene right out of the Old West, and soon it will be preserved forever as the new Oro Vista Park in Sunland. Equestrian trails will wind around the eight-acre site. There will be watering truffs for horses and even old-fashioned hitching rails, along with walking paths, picnic areas, and native plants.
It's gonna provide for trails for people to recreate. It's gonna have equestrian features so that the equestrian community can enjoy the area.
You'll have the ability to bring your horse here, have to bring your family here, you'll bring your dog here, bring your bicycle here.
The park has been more than 10 years in the making.
With the purchase of this property, we were able to save, I think, a really valuable piece of historic land in Sunland Tahunga.
Raimi Case, who runs a daycare center, is excited about the native plants and educational signage and the wide-open spaces where she can bring her small charges.
They don't play around in these hills the way we used to. They're gonna have a chance to have an environment that's more like that, where they can learn about the native plants and the animals.
This area of the park, as far as the trees, all the way around, will be developed. But past that, 2/3 of the park will remain wilderness. But some residents are concerned it will become a magnet for the homeless.
There's a lot of people in the local area right here. They were against it because of the homeless people.
But even some residents who support the park worry about the homeless encampments along the Tahunga Wash nearby.
What is your concern with the homeless as far as the park, this new park?
The park? Them using it more than the children?
What do you think about them having a, making a park here?
Oh, that'd be great, especially if they put some water in.
Still, most agree the park will be an improvement over what was formerly an abandoned lot.
This lot has been vacant for a long time. There was a ramshackle old house on it for many years.
Oro Vista Park should be open for business next spring. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The park will also include a parking lot with space to park horse trailers. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for the holiday edition of L.A. This Week.
What if a disaster strikes without warning? What if life as you know it has completely turned on its head? What if everything familiar becomes anything but? Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kit, make a plan, be informed today.
Don't worry, Patty, this isn't gonna hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Sergeants, please call the members. Good morning, good morning, good morning. It is Tuesday, December 16th. Is it the 15th? 16th, and we welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. Public is welcome. Madam- Shhh. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonneville, Buscano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Corret, LaBange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weezer moves. Mr. Corret seconds, next.
Committed to resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bloomingfield moves. Mr. O'Farrell seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, now would be the time for the flag salute.
If I could ask everyone to rise to lead us in today's, uh, flag salute. Uh, Mr. Weezer, would you take the lead on this, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise, so we can pay respects to our great flag. Uh, put your hand over your heart, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Uh, Madam Clerk, let's go through the agenda.
Items 1 through 11 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that Items 1A may be received and filed as much as an error was made. Also, the department requests to continue Item 1B, uh, to January 16th.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Uh, do we have cards?
Yes, cards on Items 1 and 9.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes. And, Mr. President, those ordinances will be held over till January 7th and last reconsidered with 12 members.
Thank you, I understand. If we could move to the next section of agenda items.
Items 12 through 51 are items which public hearings have been held. There's a request to hold Item 39.
Let's hold Item 39. Uh, members, any specials? I-
22?
Mr. Weezer?
Number 22 special, please.
We hold Item 22 as well. Members, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes. And the ordinances will be held over to, uh, January 7th unless reconsidered for 12 votes.
I understand, but, but I got a feeling. All right, so let's move on to the next, uh, section.
Items 52 through 76 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. Fuentes?
Item number 65 special for Ms. Martinez, please.
Okay, we'll hold 65?
For us, for us.
For, for you guys. For Fuentes, Mar- Martinez, um, cards?
Cards on Items 52, 60, 62, 68, 70, and 72.
Okay, let's hold those items and let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Whoa, whoa, Ms.- Madam Clerk? Are we ready? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Item 77 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yeah, for now, I think we will hold that.
On the supplemental agenda, Items 78 and 79 are items which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, let's, uh, hear those items. Members, specials, 78, 79. Don't see any, let's prepare to vote. Mr. Weezer?
Yes, I just want to acknowledge, well, number 78 special, please.
We'll hold 78, let's vote on 79. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
Items 80 through 92 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Cards on Item 90.
Okay.
And also, Mr. President, there is a request, uh, by, um, Ms. Martinez to hold Item 81.
Okay, let's, let's hold, uh, those two items and prepare to vote on the other items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Item 93 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
At this point in time, yeah, let's hold the two closed session items on the desk.
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Mr. Sadio, would you like to begin the presentation? Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I thought you were joining me here.
I'm gonna join you from, from here.
Got it.
Uh, and I may slip down there. I'm looking for Mr. LaBange. Begin.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, you and I have this great honor and privilege of sharing, uh, a group that services both our districts, and it's a, a, a group that's an incredible group. I got to meet them through a mutual friend of ours, Larry Nicola, some 12, 13, 14 years ago. Ola, Heart of Los Angeles, they're celebrating their 25th anniversary of providing dedicated service to the youth of Los Angeles and the culturally rich yet struggling, as we all know, uh, Rampart Division of Los Angeles, right on the Wilshire Boulevard, once one of the richest corridors of the city. Uh, and our office has worked with both of them in the past. You recall when you were Speaker, I was an Assembly member. We gave them a very generous grant from the state of California. Uh, they provide services to underserved youth. Uh, I was there this summer when they were doing some training with the, um, people who make movies in our city. Many directors from Hollywood were working and participating pro bono to give the experience of making a movie to some of the young people. Uh, they started with just a handful of kids in a dilapidated, dilapidated, easier said than said gym today. Uh, to serve, uh, they serve more than 2,300 youth ages 60 to 24 each year in a four-story building, 32,000 square foot campus, right at Hoover and, um, Wilshire. Uh, and all the families that they serve, uh, struggle economically, uh, simply to survive. Uh, they now have though, quite impressively, a 73-member staff, uh, more like yours, less like, like, less like mine. Uh, and they have three academic core programs, and they offer a wide variety of enrichment activities, including a comprehensive music department, a robust visual arts program, a premier sports league, and, uh, leadership and healthy living classes. They are incredible in that they do so much with limited resources, you know that. And then they're in probably one of the most densest areas this side of Manhattan. Uh, and then they, uh, don't really have the green space, and so they take advantage of what's available to them, the park across the street, the local high schools. Uh, they should be commended simply, um, because they're so, uh, efficient and so effective in utilizing the limited resources that they get, and they do a brilliant job. They had a young artist, George Gonzalez. Uh, I don't know if he drew a picture of you, but he drew a picture of me, uh, once, and drew one of Jesse Jackson, Richard Polanco, uh, honored me by doing one of my wife. He was a brilliant, brilliant artist. Uh, they just do a brilliant job, and so we're happy to be here with Tony Brown, uh, their executive director. You may want to say a few words.
Now, thank you, Mr. Sadio. Come on, let's give Ola and Tony a round of applause for all of the work that they do. And, and, and I'm honored to say a few words, and I'm proud to share Ola kind of sorta with Mr. Sadio. But I just want to take a moment, if I can, to talk about a man that I've had the opportunity to work with since the day that I was elected to this office, and that man's name is Tony Brown. Now, any organization that out, that's out there, nonprofits in particular, if you can have an individual at the helm that's even close to Mr. Brown, then I guarantee you, you're gonna have an unbelievably successful organization. I have watched him dream and dream big, and I have seen those dreams become a reality. A brand-new, uh, soccer field that was created from discarded tennis shoes, if I remember correctly. One of the fa- first skateboard parks that was built by Rod, uh, Deardick, Deardick, the MTV personality. A gymnasium that is second to none. An organization and a board of directors that are second to none. And that's what Ola is all about, and Tony is the quarterback of that team, and he never gets the credit. People sometimes don't appreciate all that Ola does, especially under Tony's leadership. So I just want to take a moment and say to my friend that number one, I'm honored to have you as a dear friend. And number two, I expect many more good things out of you. So I, I don't want you to go home and, I'll give you to New Year's, and then you can come up with something. Hard-working man puts his, uh, the, the kids first and the people at the park first before his own personal, uh, needs. It's just, I'm a, again, a better man. We need more people like you, Tony. You have this magic about bringing people together, diverse people, and making things happen. Also, he has a way of making people open up their pocketbooks and give money to the cause. It is an honor to stand with you, my dear friend. Everybody, let's give Ola and Tony and all of the people, all of the staff, another round of applause.
Mr. Sadio, very special. You gotta introduce everybody who's there with you, Mitch. Mr. Sadio, please introduce everybody standing there with Tony.
We're gonna have Tony say a few words, and he will introduce everyone.
Great. Uh, I want to let everybody know that, you know, we don't do this work alone. We do it with great partners. The Department of LA City Recreation and Parks, the Lakers, the Every Child Foundation, there are a number of folks who come around us to make all of this work. But more importantly, uh, we have amazing staff and individuals from across this city. Uh, we have amazing volunteers from all over Los Angeles. Uh, we're absolutely doing something together to make LA a better place. Um, so I want you all to meet my staff behind me. I have a number of directors who are here today, representing the different programs, from elementary all the way through, uh, high school, middle school, college prep, operations. All of these folks are committed to making LA stronger, uh, through the Rampart District and beyond. Uh, I want to also take two seconds to introduce someone who means a lot to me, uh, and that's one of our alumni who's here today. I want you guys to meet Daniela. Daniela, will you come on up here? We're very proud of her.
Hello, good morning. My name is Daniela Ojeda, and I, um, a graduate from Ola, from their, uh, from their college preparatory program that they have. I've been part of Ola for two years now and counting more on. I, um, I attend, uh, California State University, Los Angeles, and majoring in political science. And Ola has provided me with many resources that has helped me towards my path to going to college. If it wasn't for Ola, I wouldn't be in college right now. I am also, uh, a first-generation student, and they have helped me with a lot of resources, like I mentioned before. Not only that, but I am very pleasured to be here today because Ola is amazing and has changed my life drastically, and I'm just very grateful that Ola exists. And I do dream that there's many other Olas in the world. Thank you.
And, uh, we would not be here, Heart of LA would not be in this city, operating in the way that it does, uh, without our founder, the gentleman who started it all 25 years ago. Um, five kids and a basketball. He believed in kids, he believed in the hope of, uh, our city and of that neighborhood amidst a, a lot of turmoil at the time. Uh, I think that there's an entire community that thanks Mitch for taking that opportunity to believe and, and provide hope. Uh, so you guys, I want you to meet, uh, our founder, Mitchell Moore.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, uh, for 25 years of being, uh, growing in this city, contributing to the Rampart Division and making it a better, safer place to live. And I just thank the city of LA for the support we felt for 25 years and from all the council people who've surrounded us over the years. So, thank you so much.
Mr. Sadio, Mr. Wesson, I just wanted to say how special, we're so fortunate. In the heart of the city, we have the heart of LA. And how for 25 years, as you said, uh, Tony- Tony, a basketball and six people, the Recreation and Parks Department opening up and having the partnership, which is so key, the library on Sixth Street, and all that goes around there, and the tennis courts and everything, it's made a difference. I said it earlier, and I gotta use my, you know, last months to say what I should have done in the last 40 years, but I would love to see MacArthur Park and Lafayette Park come together like a Central Park. And it may be a 50-year project, I know we got the River Project, but this is where the people live. And that sports field that you put together, there's never somebody not on it, which is such a great, great place. So I'm proud of it, and for you all to know, that quarter at Hoover and Wilshire was the western boundary of the original Pueblo, Los Angeles, so it truly is the heart of L.A. Congratulations to that great eagle from Cal State L.A. too. Go charge ahead. Mr. Sadio, lower the certificate, you're blocking the people behind you. It's the tip from an old guy. It's the tip from an old guy. A big hand for Mr. Sadio leading the way there, Mr. Wesson, and Tony, and Mitch, and everybody there from Heart of L.A. Good job. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, at this time, there are 13 members. Would you like to reconsider the ordinances?
Yes, I would.
And those are items 2 through 8, 12 through 14, 53 through 58, and number 80.
Let's, for reconsideration?
Item for reconsideration, if at all possible?
Is it an ordinance?
It is. It's item number 13 from last Friday's agenda. It's Council File 13-1562-S3.
That's okay? It's okay with the city clerk?
Very good.
It's okay with the city attorney? It's okay with the man from the 7th District? So, that being said, Madam Clerk, I'll wait for your direction. Okay, on those items for the ordinances, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. At all matters, we'll go forthwith to the mayor's desk. Now, let's vote on the items. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Send them right forward to the mayor's desk, please, forthwith. All items. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, you're so effective. Thank you. Next item. Item 90, item number 90, please. Would you call that, Madam Clerk?
Item 90, call special for cards.
Donna Perlmann, Donna Perlmann. Thank you, Donna. We note the card. Continue your conversation. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Very good. Thank you. And Mr. Luna, thank you for your work at Water and Power. Next item, 52.
Item 52, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Keep watching all during the holidays. This concerns the reappointment of Mr. Douglas Collins to the Employee Relations Board. Now, I spoke when you appointed him. Remember, we vet every single one of these on kiddie porn, because you've already put one person on here who's now in prison for kiddie porn. You voted him onto a commission. Mr. Douglas Collins has no record of kiddie porn. However, he has been forced by the mayor to sign an undated letter of resignation, an undated letter of resignation. That's what all of Garcetti appointments have to do, and if he votes one-half inch the other way, Garcetti dates it and hands it in. HollywoodHighlands.org. That is free speech. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. No other speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. So ordered. Mr. Walsh, please. I'm sorry, I should have called you earlier. For item 60. Call 60.
Item 60, call special for cards.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is important. As you know, the zoo is treacherous to animals. There's a lot of animal torture going on in the zoo. And the chief veterinarian, it's a re-exemption of the chief veterinarian to the provisions of civil service. In other words, he doesn't, the chief veterinarian does not qualify for the job, and they're gonna allow him to stay in there, even though he doesn't qualify for the job. We have the worst zoo in America. We have the unhappiest animals in the world in a zoo, and one of the reasons is, we have a terrible chief veterinarian who lets our animals wither away. The chief veterinarian is not qualified. If the chief veterinarian was qualified, you wouldn't have to issue an exemption to the city charter. HollywoodHighlands.org. The zoo is terrible shape. I disagree, but it's free speech for Mr. Walsh, free speech for me, too. So, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Next item.
Item 68, call special for cards.
Donna Perlmann. Donna, put your book down. Here we go.
These reward measures are a big waste of time. It doesn't matter whether you have an additional six months, whether you have additional year, whether you have additional two years. It's because snitches get stitches. People are not gonna possibly give up their, possibly get killed and their loved ones killed to say what they did on the unsolved murder. And I still believe that if people had the right, if people didn't go after the people's guns and have all sorts of bad laws like trigger locks and having control over our bullets, that people would be able to protect themselves. So, and only the police being exempt, that's wrong. We have to have our Second Amendment rights complete and filled so that we could be able to protect ourselves if people come into after us. So, anyway, I don't agree with this thing, because I don't think it's gonna do any good. I don't think people are gonna give up. As John Walsh always says, snitches get stitches. I thoroughly agree with him. Thank you.
No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
So ordered. Next item, 70.
Item 70, call special for cards.
John Walsh. This is item 70 of 97 agenda items. They want to get everything out of the way so they can go on vacation. Again, this is the homeless count week. The homeless count week has become a sick joke. It is an incredible undercount of homeless people. Homeless people include people living day-to-day in hotels. You don't count them. You don't count, you do a terrible job of counting the people in automobiles. I mean, I have to walk above, over homeless people in Hollywood. It wasn't that way when Bradley was mayor. It wasn't that way when Reardon was mayor. Now that we have, Garcetti is mayor, the homeless have exploded. Homeless count week, you're just giving people a job who don't know how to count the homeless. Multiply their count by about times 10. This is the homeless capital of the planet. HollywoodHighlands.org. Open the roll on this one. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
So ordered. Next item, 72.
72, call special for cards.
Donna Perlmann.
I wanted to tell you that neighborhood councils, they're doing, they're trying to do very well, and they need to get as much money from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment so that they were able to use all the money that they have for the neighborhoods. So we don't need to go back and any general fund. It needs to be put with the neighborhood councils, because there's a lot of cities, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done with different events that the city council won't do. They give it over to the neighborhood councils. So I hope that the money will go back to the neighborhood councils and not over to off some general fund where we just throw it down for some rail projects and bullet trains that are not needed. So, let's get, let the neighborhood councils keep the money. Thank you.
Thank you. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
Item 1A, call special for cards.
Okay, 1A, special for cards. Mr. Walsh on item 1? Thank you. Mr. Herman, please fill your name out next time. I don't know you by this, but I could tell your script.
As a reminder, Mr. City Attorney, the Brown Act doesn't state that I have to put my name on the card, other than recognize who I am on the Brown Act, sir. Thank you. But regarding the subject of the process of liens, the City of Los Angeles continues to hamper and dissolve what many of you constituents lack. Not another citation or a bill, but the opportunity to live in Los Angeles without the actions of this city not sending certified mail to your homes to remind you, again, remind you that due process is a process where you can come here to the City of Los Angeles, stand before this council, and demand lesser or no fees charged against you or assessed against your property based on the lien that they're taking action against you. So I hold my time to one minute, Mr. Labong.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there's a request by the department to receive and file item 1A inasmuch as there's been an error.
Without objection. So ordered. Next item will be 9, real quick.
Item 9, call special for card.
Mr. Walsh? John Walsh? Thank you. Madam Clerk, Mr. Walsh, card for the file. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Next item will be 78, special appointment here on behalf of Mayor Garcetti. 78, is that correct, Mr. Weezer?
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce everyone to Ms. Antonette Anderson, who is recommended for the South Los Angeles Area Planning Commission. She presented to the Planning Land Use and Management Committee, and so we just ask her to stand up and be acknowledged. And this will be our new member of the South Area Planning Commission, has served as Director of the Los Angeles Urban League for some time, and I think her experience and knowledge of these issues will serve her well in this commission. Thank you, and I ask for an aye vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Great salute. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
So ordered. Congratulations. Another hand deserved there for all those meetings. Mr. Fuentes, item 65, called special by Mr. Fuentes.
Mr. President, amended motion 65A has been circulated.
It has been circulated.
Mr. President, just want to ask the body to adopt the amending motion 65A.
Very well. It's good speech. It's on the adoption of the amended motion. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
So ordered. Next item. Mr. Kocorian, I want to ask about item 77. Item 77, please. 77, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 77 should be heard in closed session. Item 93 is a rejection of a settlement proposal that can be heard in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
All right, 93, any questions on 93? We'll hold 77.
Please.
On 93?
Mr. President, just for the record, the recommendation by the city attorney is to reject the settlement offer.
Reject settlement offer, as we, and supported by committee, Chair Kocorian. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Next item.
Moving pretty fast.
I know.
Madam Clerk, we're gonna do item number 22, and I want a recommendation that we open the public comment for one minute on these cards. Thank you.
And, Mr. President, amended motion 22A has been circulated.
22A was circulated. So, Madam Clerk, let's call it before us right now. It's before us right now, so I have cards here. Do you want to call on these cards? From the Bicycle Coalition, Alex. Is Alex here? Thank you, Alex. I want to pronounce your name correctly. For the record, state your last name.
Hello, my name is Alec Bartrosov. I'm with the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition.
Thank you.
Local stakeholders in northeast L.A. have been working with LACBC for many years to envision a North Figaro that is safe, equitable, and inclusive. That community vision was included in the bike plan passed four years ago and the upcoming mobility plan. It was a vision of a great street.
Hold on just a second, Alex. Hold this clock for a second. I want to ask staff here to either go in the side room, or let's pay attention to the speaker. Continue. Thank you.
It was a vision of a great street before anyone in City Hall was using that term. In that time, local advocates, including the historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council, have gathered over almost 3,000 signatures and filed, filled the room at countless meetings with the same vision. A majority of attendees at the last North Fig workshop again supported a complete street that includes the long-desired bike lanes. Just since last Thursday, over 100 people have emailed you in support of the community's vision for Figaro. There's an overwhelming desire in the community to engage with the council office on the future of North Fig, and an overwhelming desire for the city to follow through on its commitment to bicycle facilities in North Figaro. It's important to ensure that as we build great streets.
It's your sentence, please.
Across the City of L.A., that these streets are designed for the safety of all who travel them, and that the planning process is open and inclusive of all voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey Morgan.
Good afternoon. The city's plan to reflect community input is disappointing anytime that what we give as far as our input is considered optional. It is so, so important that we think about our future here and how important a complete or a great street is for everyone. I went to grad school in Eugene, Oregon, and I had the opportunity to do a project for the Sinning Platinum Commission. for the Sinning Platinum Commission, where we did a study on the economic impact that bicycling had and the infrastructure that they already have there. And we found that eighty-three percent of the businesses that were there, the creative class, the people who really can make a difference and bring good jobs here, they chose to be in Eugene because of that industry. And please, please consider that when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Zachary Reanu. Zachary Reanu, I see you, Zachary.
Hello, my name is Zachary Reanu. I am education director for Finish the Ride. I do not have to bring to attention what an epidemic hit and runs are in the city. I know that a lot of the, these accidents happen because of previous planning. It's important to reflect all the information that is readily available to us. I'm a father of a two-year-old daughter that is a little skeptical, skeptical of street conditions in my neighborhood, and I would like the council to look deeper, go into data, and listen to the community for all of our plans that try to make our streets safer. And I think that North Figueroa plays a big part. Thank you very much.
Eric Bruins, is that correct, Eric? We don't yield time. Either you speak or we note your card. Okay. Kevin Lynn.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, fellow citizens, my name is Kevin Lynn. I'm a resident of District One. And I asked the city council not to approve my councilman Gil Sadio's grant application for a project in northeast Los Angeles because it is incomplete and moreover is incongruent with the citywide plan for truly great streets. My councilman's plans for street parking over bike lanes will do nothing to improve the safety, health, happiness, and prosperity of the district's citizens. In closing, the residents of Los Angeles's first district do not want more parking. We want better-designed streets that encourage active pedestrianship, safety, and greater engagement with our neighborhood, with our neighbors at the street level. Thank you very much for your time.
Keith Plimers.
Hi, my name is Keith Plimers. I'm asking the council today to not approve Councilman Sadio's proposed plan for pedestrian improvement on North Figueroa. As I cycle on North Figueroa every day, I pass a group of men who work as day laborers outside of the Home Depot on Figueroa just under the Riverside Bridge. And with them every day, I see a lot of bicycles. These are some of the most invisible and underserved citizens in our city, and bike lanes are a crucially important amenity to allow them to commute to and from work and to seek out the opportunity for work safely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Monique. I want to say, please pronounce your last, hi, Monique.
Good morning. My last name is Maravilla.
Thank you, Monique.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm asking you today to please reconsider not putting in these diagonal parking spaces and instead helping us and working with us to include bike lanes on North Figueroa Street. I'm actually opening up a coffee shop a couple doors down from councilmember Sadio's office, and I chose Figueroa because I wanted to be a part of this amazing community, one that our mayor just named a great street, and we all know why, because we have the potential to be this thriving community. And I want it to be able to serve every category of user, from pedestrians to bicyclists to people with disabilities and users of public transit. And really, this is an issue of equality. If this was, if this was a lane for people of disability, with disabilities, we wouldn't even be talking about it. But it's saying that bikers aren't as equal as car drivers, and I want to work with the council to please amend that. Thank you.
Susan Wong.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Susan Wong. I'm a CD One resident. I have a daughter who is six years old, and she rides her bicycle with her dad every day to school, and they're along North Figueroa riding. So I just want them to have a safe ride into school, a safe ride back home, like many of our friends who also ride, drive, take buses, walk along North Figueroa. We want a complete street. We want it to be safe, and we want a great street. So I, you know, I'm opposing the parts of the proposal for the diagonal backout parking along North Figueroa. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That completes the public comment cards. No speakers on the queue. Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry. I just see it now. It comes slow. It's, a body got stuck in the cloud. Okay, Mr. Weezer, then Mr. Sadio. Mr. Sadio.
Yes, thank you. Members and colleagues, let me, let me suggest you, this is one of those moments where, where perfect is not, good is not good enough, where we're making perfection the enemy of the good, where we want to have one percent dictate for ninety-nine percent. This project was ranked first out of thirty-seven projects. So what's being asked of us is to take the top-ranked project and to deny it. This project was a process of fifteen council districts and the technical staff who evaluated all the proposals brought before them, and this was the number-one project ranked. And so the consummate and aggregate wisdom of all the staff, of all the districts, looking at all the projects, chose this one, and we're proud to say, chose this proposal to be number one. It puts safety first, and we will not be bullied, and we will not be forced to compromise the public safety of the entire district. And so we are here to represent the entire district. And we're not going to be bullied, we're not going to be pushed around, we're not going to be shouted out. We're going to proceed in a very deliberate and sober manner to make sure that safety is first and foremost for the entire district, because the entire district matters in our agenda. We're going to choose to go forward with a multimodal approach that is inclusive and thoughtful of every means of transportation and includes all elements of our district. That's why it was chosen to be number one amongst all proposals, and that's why I stand to ask for your continued support. I thank you.
Thank you very much. No other speakers on the queue. Mr. Weezer.
As amended, correct. We have number two and two A as amended. Great, thank you.
So open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Thank you. Thanks for the public comment on that. Because of the weather today, I'm going to take general public comment right now. Henry Marin. Henry Marin.
Yes, as you know, Janice Hahn reminded us, and anybody that goes to negotiating table and on account for the money left on the table, it's going to be on the menu. Consequently, you're on the menu. You've been given a minute to provide you all the minute details to show why, show why this, what you've been doing is illegal. And as you know, the Congress is checking on multi-employer pension plans and says they are not funded, and that monies of private sector employees can be reduced. But we know how much public sector money is sitting in union benefit plans, is shown as by MOU-defined deductions, providing money to unions for the benefit of Hackla and Cole employees. So y'all, y'all have screwed up public sector unions and private sector union pension plans.
Christian Beck.
Good morning. I'm Christian Beck, and I'm here in support of the motion regarding council file eleven dash one seven thirty-five, the East Hollywood Over Height Fence District. This concerns the height of fences protecting the persons and properties near Western and Wiltern. I support an extension to freeze the fines on people who are merely trying to protect their privacy, families, and property from thieves and other predators. I also quickly want to support the bike lane on North Figueroa and Highland Park. And closer to home, in CD thirteen, I'm concerned over demolition and development at Hollywood and St. Andrews, which is the corner on where I live a couple weeks ago, and still going on. There's no posted notices of demolition, there's exposed power lines, there's dust from old buildings, obstruction of sidewalks and parking. There's already standing water on Hollywood Boulevard, which is a hazard for anybody riding a bike or walking there, and it's heavily traveled by kids and parents.
Thank you. If you go over to the ropes, there's a deputy of the thirteenth district, we'll send him over to the ropes. You could visit with him, get more feedback on that. Sarah Reanu.
Hi, I'm here representing a large group of community members, educators, and taxpayers in the city who are extremely concerned about the future of LAUSD. Financially, they are strapped, and they're continuing to bleeding money in the millions and millions and millions. You've heard about the FBI raiding the school district, and everybody knows now. It's, it's out in the open. So I would ask you to consider some type of task force and to review and have the public have an opportunity to hear from outside experts, and also to request a audit from FICMAT, the federal, the fiscal management and audit team, which is a, from the state, it's a state organization, as other school districts did way before they spent one penny on infrastructure or technology, so that they would learn how to spend that money wisely and not to leave our children in schools that look like they're in third-world countries. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric. And Eric, I want you to pronounce your last name for me. Is that Eric? No address? Pre-Vet?
Yes, it's Eric Preven.
Preven, thank you.
Is it one minute in public comment?
Yes, sir, please, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Eric Preven, and in the interest of full disclosure, I'm running against Mr. Kerkorian for the council District Two seat. And I wanted to say congratulations to the mayor and all on the Bloomberg philanthropies business. That does sound very, very good. It's focused on data and open innovation, pressing urban challenges, but importantly, to improve neighborhoods and residents' quality of life. And it's on that note that I want to ask Mr. Kerkorian and other members of this council who have been hedging and tippy-toeing with regard to Harvard Westlake's effort to build a playing field atop a three-story garage in an open space across the street from their campus. And, and let's not pretend that this is not your decision, because it very much is, sir. I can't imagine how this issue has gotten this far. All this talk about geological tests and, and soil samples and a student enrollment cap are red herrings. We want a straight answer. Are you opposed to this or not?
Thank you. Donna Paramon, please. Donna Paramon, public comment.
Reopen Vann Eyes video conference meeting is needed. My opinion, Obama is a war criminal and a violator Geneva Convention. He leaves the, use the US military except they don't have any confidence in them. But the CIA, CIA isn't a military, but a civilian spy agency, and therefore exempt from Geneva Convention, and Willie Lakes is the same as the CIA. Senator Dianne Feinstein is suspect may have leaked classic information to Willie Lakes on December eighth, police supervision of CIA report. It's not complete and lacks facts. ISIS and Taliban torture into a dear sphere, do sphere. Why doesn't Dianne Feinstein have a report on how they treat and torture their people, especially women? And ours is they don't cause torture, it's discomfort on the detainee. Make them give up, make him give badly information needed to save millions of lives. They have to do this. Doesn't Dianne Feinstein realize we must fight terrorist organization? It has to be done.
John Walsh. John Walsh, Jay Walsh Confidential, Eric Preven for City Council, Grace Yu for City Council. And we have three prongs. The FBI came in here, raided LAUSD. The federal government came in and raided the gangs at Ramona Gardens, and the ATF came in here when you were trying to cover up the arson, the mega arson at the Da Vinci Building, which exploded in a terrorist attack. Why is the federal government coming in here now? Because Obama has learned his lesson. This city is out of control. Go on the freeway and look at that mark of shame of that building that blew up, and you tried to blame it on a couple of black homeless men until the ATF came in and absolved them. This city is out of control. Don't come here, don't invest here, stay away from LA. HollywoodHighlands.org. Irma Garette.
Good morning, everybody. I hope the councils are here, all of them. Thank you for the ones that are sitting here. I wish that Mr. Farrell is here too, but looks like he stepped out. This is in regards to Peru Village. Just to let you know that it's going to be, well, it's already more than two years that we file the designation for Peru Village, LA, and I hope that you guys look, look on the case and give us a designation. We have more people here that are going to talk about Peru Village. You have the cards there, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Concepcion Gutierrez. If you can hold the clock, Madam Clerk, can we have the translator? Hold the clock. We're going to have the translator come over.
Counsel, I can translate.
I understand, but we like our translator, not that we don't like you. It just helps with the process and makes everybody relax. Thank you so much. Here we go. Let's restart the clock.
Mr. LaBongz.
Yes.
The nice lady is speaking in Quechua. That is a dialect. That's the reason why the gentleman is trying to translate.
Very good. So let's give him the hand mic.
Okay, so we're going to do a translation.
We'll go back to one minute. Which will be two minutes. Please straighten the microphone, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Sergeant, please.
Okay, let's start.
Muchas gracias. Para traducir. Ella ha venido hace dos años atrás. En esa, ese momento se presentó el proyecto de Peru Viles. Ella dice que no ha avanzado ese Peru Viles.
She came two years ago, and she, and she said, she came two years ago, and she said that the project Peru Viles has not advanced.
Entonces ella dice, ¿por qué no ha avanzado? Ya tengo ciento cuatro años.
And entonces ella dice, and she says, why has this project not advanced? I'm a hundred and four years old.
Dice, "Me gustaría que Peru Villas avanzara para que nosotros difundamos nuestra cultura en este país."
I would like for Peru Villas to advance so we can show our culture in this country.
And she would like to state that she really would like to be alive when a resolution is ruled on or something happened. So she's at 104, and she started the process at 102.
All right, Eric. Thank you, that's very good, very good. Next speaker will be Lizarraga. Milagros Lizarraga? Sergeant, we just check here the last... oh, here we go, thank you.
Good morning. On behalf of Peru Villas, Los Angeles, my name is Milagros Lizarraga. I am the president of Peru Villas, Los Angeles. We presented our initiative a little bit more of two years ago, in December of 2012, and it has been in the Education Committee since then. So the representative of the Education Committee, Councilmember Bernard Parks, Mrs. Nuri Martinez, and Councilmember Tom Mitchel Farrell. We will respectfully request that to move forward our initiative. We have become stronger, it's not only the Peruvian-American community, it's the Latino Community, Latino Empowerment Roundtable that made the front page on LA Times in April of this year. We're all behind this initiative. We want to see the next Latino enclave officially designated in the city of Los Angeles. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Brian Barajas?
So... I've been trying to figure this out. Mr. Castro from Brazil offered his service, and I want to know if possible, what services is he offering? Water projects or something? But I want to get... I want to see if anybody could get back to me on that. But my announcement is December 20th event. Call 323-259-1867. This is for the BRICS, Russia, India, China, South Africa. That is the BRICS, Brazil, Russia, India, China, South Africa. There's a worldwide development initiative taken by these countries. They're not our enemies, but a particular person in office is Obama.
Jose Torres?
Good morning. My name is Jose Torres. We tried to introduce a motion. We live in District 13, with Mitchel Farrell, which already left. Thank you very much for attending. And the motion is 11-1737. It's been a city man that probably is deaf for a while. We need to... It's going to expire on January 4th. We need an extension, and we would like to put in the agenda for the January 16th. If you please, the council, give us the chance to work with the community, because that's what we wanted. Mr. Wizard, have the opportunity, and I think years ago, when we came to your London Youth Committee to expose, it's a lot of people who wanted to have this thing done, and it's almost two years and doesn't move. Thank you very much.
Concepcion Gutierrez? Gutierrez? Francisco Moos? Francisco Moos? Madam Clerk, would you help on this one here? Julio? Valencia? Julio?
Good morning, council. I was here earlier with Peru Village. I'm from Springfield, Illinois, and I came to Los Angeles for graduate school. And the reason that I'm here is because being newly arrived and seeing that there's a strong community of my culture, Peruvian culture, who has taken this initiative to propose a place where people can come together, enjoy, and feel like... just like Little Italy has Little Italy, and Chinatown has Chinatown, this sense of a Peru community is very, very dear to my heart, and I wanted to just be part of it. And I also want to encourage whatever department is working on that to come back to the table so we can kind of move something here, especially for the lady who's 104, and also for myself, who I want to see, I want to be part of this, and I want to encourage more of young people here in LA to become part of this community. So thank you very much, council members, and the mayor, wherever he may be today, and happy holidays. Thank you.
Milagro? Did you already speak, Milagro? Yeah, you already spoke. Say it again?
I am here on behalf of Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council in a different issue.
Okay, but you only get one public comment card, but since you came all the way from Hollywood, you got a quick minute. Here you go, boom, boom. That's fair for me. Here we go, let's go.
On behalf of Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council, we just want to let you know that Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council supports Mr. Jose Torres' petition of extension of the motion of Over Heights Fence District. And this is a safety concern that is very important, so please take that in consideration.
Thank you very much. H? Whoever filled out a card, H? This is Mr. Herman, Mr. City Attorney, for the record.
For the record, as a reminder of your discrimination and race action towards people to allow people from Hollywood two minutes, but those of us from Boyle Heights, CD 14, one minute. What a shame. And yet, the mayor has not developed a comprehensive system for all of us for making sure that the chinchero, the debris, the garbage is off the streets. Did you read the headlines in the LA Times? The abandoned waste and illegal dumping? And what about those who are running against the new elections for 2015? Mr. Wizard, he has several candidates greatly to win him easily, Ms. Molina. And on the other hand, we have Mr. Krikorian violating, well, the Department of Building and Safety concerns. So again, you're the voters, you make the decisions. All of you are the voters here, you make the decisions. As you heard, a woman 100 years old didn't have the opportunity to stand here for two minutes and be heard by your censorship. Thank you.
Okay, that completes public comment. We thank you for your public comment on that. Next item, number 62. Oh, wait, wait, hold on. 81. 81.
Item 81, called special by Councilmember Martinez. Mindy, motion 81A has been circulated.
Just vote.
We're good.
Just vote.
But we... I think I have one card. Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman, item 81.
We're looking at a continued consideration by Ms. Nuri Martinez, Mr. Fuentes from the Valley, and also Mr. Bloomfield from the Valley. But I'm not gonna get into the details of the US Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration today, construction deadlines for the Sun Valley Economic Development, because all you heard under my public comment, that $5 million for assessing the issue of chinchero debris, and I'm not going off subject, this has to do with the development of economic commerce in the Valley, Mr. City Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong. But the construction deadline for the Sun Valley Economic Development project for improvement, again, Mr. City Attorney, should be managed by an audit so that we, the public, are bamboozled how Mr. Fuentes or Mr. Bloomfield cannot make the adjustments to meet the requirements under the US Department of Commerce for violations of abuse and misuse of the fundings solely delegated for these types of projects. Yes, I'm quiet for a reason, because there's so much talking here, it's just very...
Stay on the subject, stay on the subject.
On the subject. But again, the construction deadline should not incur more cost or more action by any of you to say to the state or the federal government, "We need more dollars." Let the taxpayers speak and not allow you to misuse appropriations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare... to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that'll now bring us to item 62. Mr. Labonge? I have cards on this item. And so I'll take the cards. Okay. Doug Haynes? Leah, I think it's Renee, I apologize. Bill Zide, please come forward.
Good morning, my name is Doug Haynes, I'm with the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council, also the Hollywood Studio District Neighborhood Council, and I'm a former board member of Hollywood Heritage. I strongly hope that you will save this house. It is crucial to this community, and I hope you will pay attention when we're saying. First, I want to thank Tom Labonge for everything you've done to initiate this process, and also Renee. But I'm gonna read your own motion to let you know about this house, because no one seems really to be paying much attention to this. The Oswald Bartlett House appears to be a significant historic resource in the Los Feliz neighborhood and for the city at large. It was built in 1914, designed by master architect Albert C. Martin, Sr., whose career and legacy have had a significant influence upon Los Angeles' built environment. The Oswald Bartlett House contributes to the community in three ways. First, it is a rare example of a single-family residence designed by master architect Albert C. Martin. Second, it is a unique example of an arts and crafts movement, colonial Revival-style building. Third, it is a rare, significantly intact representative and reminder of the historic development and character of the neighborhood. Examples of Albert C. Martin-designed, single-family homes are rare. This particular specimen provides valuable insight into Martin's career as its eclectic style and significant arts and crafts influence runs counter to the character of most of his known works. Please, most of you... again, most of you aren't paying attention to what I would say, I would ask, to strongly consider what we gain by losing this house, which is nothing, and I hope you will vote to support this community and oppose the motion, which is to allow it to be demolished. Thank you very much.
Okay, if I could ask, is Leah? Bill Zide? Aaron Epstein? Please, when I call your name, come forward. Yes, sir.
Good morning, my name is Bill Zide. I am the chair... I'm the applicant, I also am the chair of the Hollywood Studio District Neighborhood Council and a member of East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. I'm asking for continuation and that you deny this as it is agendized. This issue, this is based on additional information regarding this house, and the staff of CHC and Historical Resources now has that. I would hope that staff will speak to this point here. Please understand, to do other than continue is to vote to demolish this 100-year-old A.C. Martin House, as well as the connection to Holby Estates and the family of Bartlett, which is connected to hamburger department stores. Once this is gone, it's gone forever. You do not get a second chance. It is supported by the community, the NC's, the Conservancy, and most of the stakeholders in the community. The developer is from outside, and it is not from the community. He has gotten support from the mayor's office. I know this because we have a mutual friend who said, and who is also an airport commissioner, who said he would work to scuttle this. So I would ask that you consider it on its merits, and particularly with the new information. Mr. Labonge, I have greatly appreciated your support on this, and called you yesterday because I wanted to ask that you continue and ask for continuation. You, of all people, appreciate the history, the culture, and architecture of Los Angeles, and also as Mitchel Farrell, asking you as well as someone who appreciates these things in supporting the Coronado House, which has less going for it but a similar type of thing. Because if the council votes again to support this as it is written, it will be demolished by the end of this week. So what we're asking is that you be sensitive to the community who supports this rather than outside sources that would like to tear it down.
Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Epstein, followed by Abraham Sohomonian, and I think I have a Leah Renee still. Charles, is it Fisk or Fisker? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I know, I don't mean to find fault with you, but I was born in East Los Angeles, Boyle Heights, not Beverly Hills, and I drink my beer out of a stein. I appreciate your letting Councilman Labonge occupy that seat for a little bit today. We always enjoy Tom up there, he does a good job.
Yes, he does.
I've been a resident of Los Angeles since 1930. I know it's inevitable that all the historic landmarks that I've witnessed over the years no longer are departed, go down, but this particular site, the A.C. Martin House, was a very distinguished architect, and I do hope that this item is preserved. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, sir. Okay, so Abraham, followed by Charles, and I think it's Fisk, I could be wrong. Christina Beck? If Christina Beck, if you're here, if you could walk down the center? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Abraham. It's interesting, everybody talks about A.C. Martin as the architect. Actually, he was uniquely gifted in the fact that he could do dynamic analysis in mind. He's the one that, with the city hall, the reason we have it at 444 foot in height is because he was able to do the dynamic analysis in his mind, floor by floor. This man who was able to build 104-foot cantilevered balconies without structural steel for the Million Dollar Theater, who built the hamburgers building, he went to Ventura County Courthouse, he had no business building homes. I gave a flyer that you guys should all have a picture of in your possession. If you look carefully, there are only three known houses to exist, and if you look carefully, the one at the top is the most beautiful of the three. It's singularly unique because A.C. Martin and Oswald Bartlett were dear friends, whereas this city hall was an impersonal construction. These particular homes for friends and family are very unique, it has his personal touch. He personally supervised the construction of the Bartlett House. It doesn't get any more personal than that, and if we're supposedly interested in preserving cultural heritage in this city, and you guys vote to destroy his single most beautiful work, I'm not sure what we're doing as a city. If you look carefully, you yourselves decide which of these three houses is worth preserving, and clearly the first one is by far the most elegant and graceful. And Margaret Petty, the granddaughter, testified that A.C. was personally hands-on, because while he was doing the Ventura County Courthouse, he stopped what he was doing, he came and he was personally present with the building of this house. If we don't save this house, I'm not sure what we're doing as a city. Please, please allow this house to be preserved, and please grant the continuation of time considering the context of the Holby House and the neighborhood as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. So I've been told that my eyes aren't working, it's Charles Fisher. Okay, so I apologize. Okay, so I apologize. Christian Beck, and Ilan Murdoch, maybe? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Councilmember Weston. I know we've dealt with each other before. I wrote the nomination on this particular house. I was extremely impressed when I discovered after fifteen seconds at Building and Safety that it was an A.C. Martin House. It was never properly vetted in the first place. In the process, recently, we found other information on this that was brought up by the Los Feliz Improvement Association. The fact that this street, Kenmore, was the driveway for the Arthur Letts Estate. Arthur Letts, the founder of Broadway department stores, was one of the major movers and shakers in Los Angeles. When he designed the Holby Tracts, he designed it as a gateway to the neighborhood. These homes were owned by movers and shakers. We know about Bartlett, who was very important in his own right in the department store business. We know also that his neighbor across the street was none other than Louis B. Mayer, later of MGM Productions. These are important people in our history. The mayor house is gone. It was demolished years ago. But we have the Bartlett home. I submitted information, which all of you should have, it's a lot of this additional information that shows these connections. This is information that was never presented in writing to the Cultural Heritage Commission. We are asking that there be a continuance on this item, so that it can be sent back to Cultural Heritage, so the additional information can be properly vetted, because this is a very important house. I might add also, as Abraham mentioned, A.C. Martin did not design houses as a general thing. He knew Bartlett, they were friends. The house at the bottom of that was done for his sister and brother-in-law. These were homes, these were friends and family. That was who he designed homes for, and he took a very personal interest in those homes. A.C. Martin is one of the most important architects in our city. We're standing right now in a building that he was partly responsible for the design of. It is extremely important that this property be properly vetted. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Christian Beck, Ilan Murdoch, Ben Resnick.
Okay, hi, Christian Beck. Yeah, my sister would be happy to know that her name was said in city council. Thank you, not a problem. You know, as a native Angeleno, I'm not an expert on architecture, but one of the joys I have, as a limo driver, that's my job, I get to drive people through town and show them some of the amazing architecture that is just really scintillating as you drive through the streets and highways of Los Angeles. I would think that we should do everything we can to preserve this particular house, and I'm also a member of the Hollywood Studio District Neighborhood Council, and we did voice support to do all we can to prevent the demolition of this treasure. And I think it would be a shame if this got demolished. So let's do all we can to save it, and others like it, especially in Hollywood. Thank you.
Thank you. So Murdoch, followed by Mr. Resnick, followed by Sir Sherry, and Sherry, I'll let you give me the last name. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Ilan Murdoch. I'm the developer of the property. The record's been made very clear that we went through this process and have been in it for over a year. We obtained public hearing entitlements over a year ago for the demolition and construction of the proposed project. There was no opposition, there were no appeals. Based on that, we have gone through Building and Safety Plan Check, and we obtained and paid for building permits. We've been sitting on those paid building permits for now six months, unable to build this process. I understand that the issue of its historic question came up, and so we didn't proceed. We have looked into it. The process has been thoroughly vetted. It's gone through the Office of Historic Resources, not once but twice. It's gone through Cultural Heritage Commission, site tours, not once but twice. Every time it's gone through, the Office of Historic Resources staff report concluded it should not be designated. The Cultural Heritage Commission voted on it twice, the first time unanimously, four to zero, the second time unanimously, five to zero, that it's not a historical monument. I went to Plum a week ago, and they passed it through. Here I am today, sitting on building permits. This issue of its historic nature came up at the last minute, right when we were about to start construction. The project has been delayed now six months, and I ask the council, as a matter of fairness, process, and the fact that the historic question has been thoroughly vetted, thoroughly vetted now, to please allow me to move on with the building permits that I have in hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, if you could just identify yourself.
My name is Sherry Bonstel. I represent Kenmore Investments. They're the owners of the property, and they're asking you to deny the designation today. As my client has said, he received approvals for this project in November of 2013. The ZIA approved it, it wasn't appealed, and he filed an NOD, and the statute of limitations has long since run, and that statute found that there was no historic significance to this property. And since that time, Councilmember Labonge has asked us to take another look at the property, and we've done that. Our historian, Margarina Wellner, who's very well-known, looked at all of the aspects of the property. She looked at whether or not this was a historic district, and what the importance was of the street, and what the importance was of the building, and she determined that even though A.C. Martin did design this, this was not one of his notable buildings. He's not known for houses. He designed the city hall, and that's the type of building that he is most known for. This is a small house, and the scale of what he's done, it's not very significant. There's nothing notable in the building. And we ask you, now that we've gone through Cultural Heritage Commission twice and received their support of denial of the designation, that you make the same determination. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick.
Good morning. Ben Resnick with Jeffrey Engels, Butler, and Mitchell. You just heard from my law partner, Sherry Bonstel, talk about some of the legal issues. I just want to raise the fact that this project, as Mr. Murdoch had indicated, was ready to go, ready to start construction when this late application came in. The reason we're here before you today is Councilman Labonge wanted to have a second look, and basically called a timeout, if you will, and that's what's happened. This project's been stalled, and the historical review started all over again, and it has been completely vetted. The staff has looked at this project inside out, they've done site tours. The Cultural Historical Commission went on the site, did its site tours, and as you've heard, they've now had the project before them twice, and twice rejected it as of historical significance. The staff has been consistent, and they're saying, "No, this house is not worthy of it." So notwithstanding the fact that we just have applicant here who just refuses to accept the answer, the project was thoroughly vetted. And it is sad, though, that these things happen the way they happen, where someone goes through a process like this small developer, and complies with all the rules, and now gets stuck in this long-term kind of process. But it is what it is, and we simply ask you today to adopt what the Cultural Heritage Commission has recommended, which is not to designate, what the staff has recommended, which is not to designate it, and what the Plum Committee had referred to you, which is not to designate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, followed by Mr. Walsh.
Sorry to record this unfortunate event, but I have to do so, because just hearing how the red flags go up for your special interests and your special causes, you're not creating a friendly development area in the city of Los Angeles, and that's the bottom line. I am totally for the project to go forward at this point and allow the red tape to be cut, because Mr. Labonge didn't take consideration of time to really listen in to the points and views of the builder. And then yet, we allow this horseshoe to interrupt the business just because you want to look good on video, like I do here, see?
Stay on the subject.
So I'm just saying to all of you, I'm just saying to all of you that this decision of yours is a joke. You're taking advantage of a builder to proceed and go forward. He got all the permits, he went through all the rhetoric of engineering and bullshit to build this building, and now he's held back to continue. So I'm saying, draw a line, City Attorney, let's put some attention to this, because, Dion.
Stay on the subject.
The investment in these projects throughout Hollywood, I understand, but you should hold up to the records and to the Historical Monument Society that before you sell a building that you already know or don't know, wake up. Wake up and let people know the kind of business you're really doing in the city of Los Angeles. So I am opposing to the negative situation you created here, and I'm saying, go forward with the provisions of allowing the builder to finish his project and not be assessed what more fines and loss of money due to the six months of waiting for all of this. So you see, Tom's not really interested. I have you in.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go ahead. Tear the building down. I dare you to tear the building down. The whole world is watching. We, as a city, where the buildings, the Da Vinci explodes, and if a fire doesn't work, then you demolish the building. You are demolishing the history of Hollywood for the developers, and let's not blame the Cultural Heritage Commission, which are just pimples on Mayor Garcetti's backside, okay? They have to vote his way, because the mayor has their letters of resignation in his hand. All he has to do is sign it. You are destroying Hollywood for the developers. I'm not here to be friendly to you. I'm saying you have no idea the repercussions of tearing that building down. We are going to make sure that people in South Africa know you're destroying Hollywood. We want to, we will let people in Asia know what you're destroying Hollywood. We will let the whole world see those gigantic crushers tearing our city down. For Mr. Resnick's clients, I'm sorry, HollywoodHighlands.org, you make me sick to my stomach.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask from the Planning Department to sit at the front table there. Members, we all love this city. I love it particularly. I love our architecture. I went out after I heard from the community that they thought that there was not a thorough review of this property. I heard, and we acted. You all supported me in getting them to look at it. Mr. Lambert, please, Lambert, please address the council on this issue.
Good morning, President Weston, and members of the council, Lambert, Giesinger, and Nels Youngborg with the Office of Historic Resources and the Planning Department. The Cultural Heritage Commission did review this application and nomination at the request of the city council. The commission determined that the property does not meet the criteria of the Cultural Heritage Ordinance for a property worthy of designation, and that is the recommendation of the commission.
So that's the recommendation. I should have voted for the recommendation. I'm sorry, if there was ability for your commission to see it that way, I would support it, but it didn't see it that way, so I will support the commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Englander.
I just want to rise and thank Mr. Labonge on this, and particularly to the folks in his community, and those particularly who were voicing opposition to the recommendation from the commission on this. Mr. Labonge did something bold in putting in this motion for further study, and the study was extensive. What's being circulated, the three other homes from A.C. Martin, aren't this home, and I don't know why those pictures aren't being circulated. In the interior, particularly the interior that they showed, there were significant changes to. But more importantly was this. More importantly, the applicant in this particular matter checked first with the commission and the office, and it was stated that there wasn't significant cultural significance on this. It was later found by some of the members of the community that perhaps A.C. might have signed and signed some blueprints, some early designs, not knowing full well exactly what was behind that, and they further studied that and researched it. Mr. Labonge then sent it back to them to do a full analysis, which they did, and came up with their recommendation, which is incredibly rare for the commission to take anything that is significant at all and say it's not. So they are always incredibly cautious on these things. And Tom did the right thing here, by slowing it down, by looking at it. I think the commission did the right thing, and I support the I-vote, and wanted to just stand and rise to thank Mr. Labonge for siding with the community, slowing this thing down, and looking at it further, and doing the right thing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
We're going to go now to item thirty-nine. I have a card, I have Mr. Herman. Oh, he's out of time, Mr. Herman's out of time.
And Mr. President, for item thirty-nine, an amended motion, thirty-nine A, has been circulated.
Okay. All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to take your special one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, city staff has learned that the problem of oversized vehicles parked under three segments of the Ten Freeway has increased to the point of becoming a safety issue. Immediate action is required to establish parking restrictions due to the impending council recess. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.2, before considering the substantive motion.
Let's open the roll.
Mr. President, this is on the findings.
On the findings. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And now we'll actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now let's move to item seventy-seven, is it, Mr. City Attorney? So we're going into closed session. Sergeants, if you could clear the chambers. So we're going into closed session. Sergeants, if you could clear the chambers. So we're going into closed session. Sergeants, if you could clear the chambers. Are we, uh...we back in business? Okay, so, uh...Mr. City Attorney, do we have to vote on that in open session? Okay, so if I could have the clerk read, uh...I guess that's the appropriate way to proceed. So Patrice.
Recommendation is to authorize settlement in the case entitled Maria Vovacava et al. versus the City of Los Angeles, a settlement in the amount of $750,000.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, I think it would be appropriate for us to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting.
Blooming Philbonne, Buscain Osadio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar Caress, Corrigan Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson, thirteen members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, so what item do we want to go for? Ninety, uh, ninety-six. Item ninety-six?
Items ninety-four through ninety-six are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Let's go to ninety-six. I have a card for Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, item ninety-six.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or Jay Walsh Confidential. Uh, this concerns emergency parking plan for Beechwood Canyon. Beechwood Canyon is just full of cars from all over the city. Our joggers go there, and those of us who live in Beechwood Canyon are absolutely out of, uh...tearing our hair out on, uh...with so many people, so many cars in our area. We hope that this parking plan, uh...does some good, and, uh...it certainly is an emergency. And, uh, at the, now that we're in the holiday season, even more people are flooding, uh...the area. One-family home area, Beechwood Canyon, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's, uh...prepare to vote on this issue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now we're moving to item ninety-four. Uh, Mr. Herman and, uh...Mr. Walsh. Item ninety-four. Item ninety-four. I...Item ninety-four, Mr. Herman.
Angelinos, is it incoherent on part of this city not to take into consideration that the Da Vinci fire was a result of criminal, criminal investigation? So how dare this council authorize to receive and utilize insurance proceeds for the process of this fire and recover a plan to increase for property management and other related services? Now whether...is this ironic or abstract and bizarre? You have to put into mind that here's a... You have to put into mind that here's a building no more than a hundred yards from City Hall that burned and the insurance, the necessary activity related to the recovery for the response of the plaza, the Da Vinci fire, for related recovery, for activities, again, for the plaza towers by three million dollars for funding to increase to solely six million, for a total of nine point twenty-six million. I find it conclusive that the FBI and the ATF need to investigate this agenda item because, again, there is something very suspicious and fishy and not like Nixon would say, dicky tricky, to pull something on the taxpayers and those involved on this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. What this does is, this is the city trying to cover itself and collect insurance from, uh, the residual effect of the Da Vinci fire. What it did to the neighboring, uh, tower, to the Figueroa Tower, this increases the funding level from six point two to nine point two million dollars. In other words, the city wants nine point two million dollars from the, from their insurance for the damage now, uh, done by the Da Vinci fire. Ten million dollars, the actual damage to the building, plus, uh, two million dollars for the freeway. We're talking about twenty, twenty-two million dollars of damage, which you're blaming on two black guys who stripped some cardboard and were trying to keep warm homeless in the, uh, in the Da Vinci Towers where they had one security guard who wasn't on the site. The building exploded. It exploded into flames in ten seconds. Who are the eyewitnesses? The fire department. It happened right under their nose. I'm telling you, nothing like this has ever happened in a major city in the world. Everyone can see what happened on the freeway. I'm telling you right now that the insurance investigators are the ones I trust the most because if it is arson, you're not going to collect a dime. You're not going to collect a dime if this was arson. And of course, when I got up here Friday, everyone said I was psychotic to even suggest arson until the, uh, the alcohol and firearms, uh, people, the federal investigators said nothing. Terrorism has not been excluded. I'm telling you right now, this hasn't ended. This is the worst arson fire in the history of America. HollywoodHighlands.org for all the information on the arson fire. You won't get it in the LA Times because it might lower real estate prices.
Thank you. Let's prepare to, uh, vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Whoa, whoa, wait, 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 wait. Ms. Pearman, no, 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 relax, sergeants. Does she have a card or something that I didn't get? Okay, well, come on, Donna.
It shows here, if it says the building exploded, that it wasn't simple little, uh, people, homeless people trying to make a fire, that we got a big problem when we have a big building explode. This means that there's big, uh, that there's terrorist terror out there that, um, can explode our buildings and this is really dangerous. And of course, uh, now they're trying to make, um, much of money off of our misery. But what we gotta do is, we gotta, uh, we gotta, we gotta have it where these buildings don't explode because, uh, who knows what other buildings might start exploding and these, uh, buildings are way too heavy, uh, bad for, um, our fire department to take care of. So we need to find where is the terror coming from so that we won't have any more explosions of buildings. Who knows? The next building that might explode might have, be filled with people. So, uh, and then it won't just be a loss of property, it will be a loss of people that will be, uh, huge. So, uh, instead of worrying about trying to, uh, give money to the city, let's try to find out where, uh, this terrorism is coming from so we won't have any more exploding buildings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now we're gonna go to, uh, item ninety-five. I have cards on item ninety-five. I have Mr. Herman and Mr. Walsh.
Well, many Angelinos, residents of Los Angeles, it's very obvious why we're trying to execute for the real property and the lease and contract for the departments and again, all due to the displacement, due to the Da Vinci fire at 221 North Figueroa Street. This space, now ruined by this large immense fire, has cut back some of the services the city renders to many of us. Had they implemented another location within the same vicinity, I'm sure that the terms and conditions of this contract wouldn't waver the negotiation and the terms of the lease. So, communication from the Department of General Services Municipal Facilities Committee report to be submitted, negotiate, execute real property lease contract by the departments, for the departments displaced, again, by the Da Vinci fire located at 221 North Figueroa The physical impact statement simply states, the reports here thereof, is no anticipated impact of the general fund, but it is. It will impact the general fund because now we have to relocate our sources and all you taxpaying dollars to a different building and likely pay higher lease for a short-term lease. Come up with better, with a better strategy.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Ms. Pearman, I don't have a card.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or Jay Walsh Con- Jay Walsh Confidential or tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Okay, what happened is the amount of damage that was done by the Da Vinci fire to the neighboring, uh, North Figueroa Tower, we have no idea. All you did was print in the LAPD that some Toys for Tots were destroyed. But we're talking about right here, you're talking about nine point two-six million dollars worth of damage. That's not my figure, that's your figure. If you want to correct me, correct me. If you don't correct me, that means everything I say is, is stands as a fact. This was, uh, so what you have to do now, because you've lost entire, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-feet-square-feet of office space due to the Da Vinci Tower, uh, the Da Vinci fire in the neighboring, uh, North Figueroa Tower, uh, you're going to have to find someplace elsewhere, lease out damage. We haven't had damage like this in the history of Los Angeles. The LA, remember why is it, uh, is the LA Times keeping quiet? What this does is lower real estate values in downtown. The Chinese investors don't want to come here because everything's out of control here. So the LA Times, which owns all that downtown property, it keeps everything quiet. That's why you have to go to the blogs. You have to go to my blog and other blogs at Jay Walsh Confidential. We're talking now about a fire that only the ATF will find, will discover what really happened. Was it terrorism? Whatever it was, it went up in two seconds and the LAFD stood there with their finger up their ass watching the fire.
Thank you. Okay, before we, uh, vote on this, I want to defer, or I want to call on Mr. Bloomingfield. It's my understanding that we need to quickly reconsider item ninety-four.
Yes, sir.
So that you can state an amendment that, okay, so let's vote on item ninety-four for reconsideration. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, thank you. I defer to you for the actual amendment.
So, so I move to include the Municipal Facilities Commission report in that item.
Okay, so now we actually are voting on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That's adopted as amended.
Uh, Mr. Corian, did you want to make an intro? Go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, these last few months, CD2 has been blessed with the services of, uh, two terrific interns, uh, which are going to be leaving us, uh, today after, uh, conclusion of our fall internship program. Justin Pascone and, and Robert Gardner, who are here with me today. Come on up, guys. Um, Justin is, is finishing up his studies at USC, his graduate studies in urban planning. Uh, he helped us this year with, um, drafting motions and resolutions, researching a number of policy issues and assisted the communications team as well. And he's going to go on after leaving SC to do, uh, great things. I know he's especially interested in, in fighting, uh, climate change, uh, and hopefully he'll be, uh, here in Los Angeles making an impact for a long while to come. Uh, Robert was an intern in our district office, in our field office. Uh, he's a junior at LA Valley College, so, um, uh, he's a, uh, homegrown, uh, local, local guy in the district in CD2. And he's, um, applying now to transfer, hopefully to UCLA, Berkeley, Santa Cruz, or UCSD. Uh, he's an urban studies major and, uh, he helped a lot in informing our constituents about the services that are available to them from our city government. In fact, he compiled a, a CD2 guide to services that is going to be a great help for our constituents. So I just want, and he's, uh, he's planning to be a city planner as well, so maybe he'll be back here, uh, working with us in City Hall as well. So I just want to thank, uh, Justin and Robert very much for their services to the people of, of CD2 and all of Los Angeles and, and especially to our team.
Thank, thank you guys very much and good luck. Good luck in the future. Okay, Mr. Uh, City Attorney, we'll go back and, and actually deal with item ninety-five. We have to, it's my understanding that you're going to recommend to me that we go into closed session again on this item. Now, the reason why we can't, we couldn't have just handled this before when we were in closed session because these are two completely different meetings. So I'm now going to ask the, uh, City Attorney to officially make his recommendation and then we will proceed.
That's correct, Mr. President. Uh, I would advise that council recessed a closed session to discuss with GSD price and terms of payment in real estate lease negotiations regarding the properties listed on the agenda.
Okay, sergeants, you heard the order. And again, sorry for the inconvenience, there just wasn't a, a way to work around it.